I'm still here.
I can hear noise in the background.
Game show contestants.
We're the judges.
Yeah, it sounds really good. Thanks, Brian.
How we doing, John?
Joe?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah, yes. Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, very low, Joe.
Really?
Really.
Put it in a cup.
Normally, yeah, because you're always yelling at me. How about now?
Now you can tone it down a bit.
How about now?
Okay.
There you go. You're good.
There we go. Okay. We don't have you visually, but we've got you audibly.
Disappointing.
Yes. Technology. Okay, 7:35. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Prano.
Here.
Mr. Nimmick.
Here.
Mr. Zamba. Mr. Harney.
Here.
Mr. Thorin.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President. We have a quorum. We have a meeting. Everyone can hear Mr. Nimmick, and he can hear us, although we do not have the visual this evening. The rest of the board, with the exception of Mr. Zamba, is present at Village Hall. So we will start with the agenda. I think number four is scratched. We've already had the office of offices. Okay, the president's report. First off is the reopening of Village Hall and the Village Complex. As we move from Phase Four through the Bridge Stage to Phase Five, items or people are being allowed to open, capacities have been increased, and the world is returning to a sense of normalcy that we've not seen in 15 months. So the question, because it is in front of this board, is due to the pandemic, we closed the office and Public Works Buildings to the public last March. The time is to now stop and look around and decide whether we need to want to reopen, and if so, when shall we start it? I know our neighbors have targeted, what is it, the 7th of June, which would be the first meeting month, first meeting day in June also, as the date that they will reopen their Village Halls. The state has said we will do, what do they call it, Phase Five through this Bridge Transition, no later than June 11, unless the metrics go sideways on us, and then they will extend it. So my question to the board is, when shall we schedule on reopening to the public? June 7th, June, what, seven days would be the 14th? That would be after the state Bridge. But it's somewhat up to us at this point. Capacity changes have been made with the Bridge policy. For example, we're now allowed 60% of the maximum capacity within this building. Forty-four was it. We're now allowed up to 26. In the past, we were allowed 10. So, yeah. Things are beginning to move forward a little bit.
I would be okay with June 7th. If that's our first board meeting in June, I would be good with that.
Yeah, I think the 7th makes sense.
Okay. Seven? Seven? Uh, do we need a motion on that?
I think consensus would be sufficient.
Consensus is sufficient, okay. 7th of June, then we will resume. We will reopen the Village Hall and the Public Works Complexes to the public as of 8:00 a.m.
And then the hours would be what they've been?
Our hours are currently 8:00 a.m. to 3:30, yes. Okay. Uh, the next item is an amendment. Oh, we never did the minutes. That's what happened.
That's what was missing.
That's what was missing. I back up. Uh, we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 17, or May purple, is it May?
May 3rd.
May 3rd, 2021. Uh, the old board.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2021 for the old village board.
Sergeant. Moved by Prano, seconded by Harney to approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2021 for the old board. Any additions or corrections? If not, uh, roll call. Roll call. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
There's, uh, Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. The minutes for the old board on May 3rd, 2021 are approved. We have a motion to approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2021 for the new board.
So move the atly. Second, Prano.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by Prano. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the new board for May 3rd, 2021? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay, now we're back to the president's report. Uh, okay, first item was a reopening. We've got that. The second item is amending the minutes of April 5th, 2021. If I could have a motion to approve the amendment to the minutes of April 5th, 2021.
So move, Harney. Second, Diatley.
Moved by Harney, seconded by Diatley to approve the amendment, amended minutes of April 5th, 2021. Uh, any questions or comments about that? I believe it was Mr. Merkel at the time asked that we revise his comments. That is the only revision that we have on those minutes.
Actually, there, Mr. President, there's another one, and that was the addition of the Resolution 532. That was a minute from the prior minute.
Okay.
Because of a technical glitch in the recording, that did not come up when I first, when I prepared the minutes. That is the
Okay. We've got two items in the minutes of April 5th, 2021. The Resolution 230, 532 is now included, and the change to the comments made by Mr. Merkel. Any further comments, questions? If not, roll call, please. Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Diatley.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay, the next and final item is, for the president's report, is the final copy of the 2021 fiscal year budget. If you recall at the last meeting, I presented it to you. You guys took a look at it. You had a couple of things you wanted changed. Those changes were made by Brian and the finance guy. Uh, there are two other changes that were made that were brought to my attention after that meeting. When Brian was making the changes that we directed, he noted that we had not placed any figures in the water or sewer department for overtime pay. A little bit of an oversight on our part, because water main breaks don't necessarily happen between the hours of 8:00 and 3:00. Nor do sewer alarms wait until the business hours of 8:00 to 3:00. Uh, so he noted that. He caught it. We discussed it with Kyle Killinger in Public Works. We've got those figures included in the final copy. Uh, Joe, it's not good news for you. It increases your deficit by about eight, about yeah, about 4K in sewer, and it increases you about 8K in water. So. But we need to have those numbers in there. They are now in there. This is the final and official copy of the fiscal year 22, 2022 budget.
Where is the overtime in?
Water and sewer. You have to go to the enterprise funds for sewer.
Yeah.
Enterprise funds for water. And you'll see at the bottom that we've inserted about $4,000 overtime in there. See it?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank Brian for catching that. Otherwise, it'd be, you know, call Kyle, and he'd say, "I'll be out tomorrow."
And as we talked when we were doing this at the last meeting, even though there's a particular line and tree in the budget for, let's say, the generic equipment, when anything does come up, we still, as a board, look at that potential expenditure to approve or modify or very good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, that's the notes on the budget. The next item that'll be coming, now that we've got the budget approved, will be the appropriation ordinance. Uh, we hope to have that brought to the board the first meeting in June. It is due by no later of July, so we will be about 60 days ahead of that deadline for a change. Uh, a couple of other quick items from the president. I'm pleased to report that as of Friday afternoon, I hired a new Director of Finance for the Village of Sleepy Hollow. They will be starting with us on June 16th. Well, they've got 33 years of municipal experience. They've got CPA, and they've got quite a financial depth that I think will be helpful. There will be a little
That individual will take Brian's that individual will take Brian's
That will take, will become what Henry and Alan had been, Director of Finance.
And then they also attend the board meetings.
They will attend the board meetings. They will also be the secretary and part of the Finance Committee, and carry through on all the various reports and procedures that we need from that standpoint. Uh, the last item I've got is a quick reminder that next Monday morning at 8:00 a.m., there'll be the swearing-in of the new Chief of Police. Chief Parma will be sworn in at 8:00 in the morning. We've got coffee and a couple of power rings available for those who want to join us next Monday. But that is it for the president's report. The clerk's report?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Uh, planning and zoning, no report. Attorney, no report. The engineer has submitted a report, which is no change. There wasn't much for him to report. There is a requested permit from Comcast for work in the right-of-way of the village, which Mr. Steele has noted that he did not receive until after 3:00 on Thursday. He has not had time to look into this. Uh, but I will tell you, if you take a quick look at the pictures of it where that were included with the permit, it is for installation of fiber optic to this building. And it will be fiber optic from the street up to a manhole that they will dig right out in front of Public Works. Then they will shoot under the parking lot. Then they want to come up to the utility pole that we've got back in the corner, and then across the street with it. Uh, if you would, I would appreciate it if you would give me permission to sign that permit once the village engineer signs off on it. So one of the reasons is just to keep this thing moving.
Don't move. President, Joe?
Okay, Joe's authorized me to sign the permit what, once the village engineer gives the okay. Do I have a second?
Second, Diatley.
Moved by Nimmick, seconded by Diatley to authorize Village President to sign the Comcast permit upon the review and approval of the village engineer. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Motion of five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay. Next item is the warrants for what is this, Monday, May 17th? We have a motion to approve the warrants.
A motion that we approve the council payable warrants of May 17th, 2021 in the amount of $132,095.30. Second.
Moved by Prano, seconded by Harney to approve the warrants of May 17th, 2021 in the amount of $132,095.30. Any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay, we can either start the trustee reports and then break for the 8:00, or we can just amend the agenda and go for the 8:00 presentation.
I make a motion, we the agenda and move up to 8:00 p.m. presentation to this time, 7:50 p.m. Second, Diatley.
Moved by Prano, seconded by Diatley to amend the agenda to move the 8:00 position up 10 minutes. Any comments or questions? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. 8:00 p.m. is upon us, and we're ready for the presentation.
I need you.
Okay.
Yeah. We've got an 8:00 presentation by any liberal? Okay.
Well, my name is Bruce Billmeyer, and I reside at 319 Sharon Drive. We're seeking here insight and direction regarding Lake Sharon and several issues we need to resolve. You know, I was going to start this presentation with the words, "On the shore to get you going by the shining Big Sea water." But apparently those words are already used, so I
Copyright.
Before I start, I want to say thank you to the Sleepy Hollow first responders for their quick reaction to our 911 emergency last Saturday night in Sharon Drive. Situation was handled with professionalism and expediency. Thank you for that. Ladies and gentlemen, Lake Sharon is dying. Over the last several years, the
Over the last several years, residents who own homes on, directly on Lake Sharon and the surrounding area have noticed several issues regarding receding water levels, poor water quality, dangerous silt buildup, integrity of the lake and the dams, especially the southern point. Our concerns are especially critical regarding the following salient points. One, safety. Several local residents, for one reason or another, accidentally stepped or fallen in the lake, sunk up to chest deep, just off the shores. This is a real safety hazard for anyone on the shores or anyone close to the lake. Most of the residents adjoining the lake have removed foliage that held the dirt and silt on the banks. This has resulted in, albeit better views, however, it creates a dangerous erosion problem resulting in a very high level of silt. This is very dangerous to all residents, but especially anyone close to these eroded shores. We're particularly concerned with kids, fishermen, potentially wildlife, and there are always kids playing on that southern dam, and it just takes one slip and it's a huge exposure for the village. Number two, stagnant and low water levels. We realize we've been in a drought condition too the last few years. I can get them. The low level of water in the lake create a real breeding ground for our friend, the mosquito, which carry deadly diseases such as West Nile virus, which is especially deadly to senior citizens in the area. This low stagnant water level is also dangerous for the fish, even everyone's favorite, the carp. Believe it or not, last winter, ten to fifteen of these very large carp, up to fifteen pound carp, froze to death in the bank due to low water levels. There are zero or minimal levels of bass and other game fish in the lake, and even the waterfowl laugh and stand up, and you can see the duck legs standing in it. Number three, integrity of the southern dam. The current dam on the southern edge of Lake Sharon is in disrepair. It has not been refurbished or redesigned or repaired since the mid-1950s. Apparently, from what we understand in the history of Sleepy Hollow, someone tried a midnight repair early around 2001, it became a stopgap for a while. But now the land around the dam is eroded, and the sandbags provided by the village are not stopping the drainage. Heavy rains washed away any temporary attempt at sandbagging. In addition, children are playing around this and adding to destruction and creating the aforementioned safety hazard. Our research has led us to several hydrologists and local soil water conservation organizations and performance of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We know that the dams were built by the original land developer of Sleepy Hollow before waterway legislation and rights forgiven the U.S. Army, and hope you might have some context so we can discuss next steps. Maybe repairs to the dam can be grandfathered in, we don't know. This is why we're here seeking your help and direction. Number four, Lake Sharon is a community asset. Citizens of this village rely on this for sport, Fourth of July for fishing, community events, prestige and morale. If a lake is allowed to drain or become a mud hole or dangerous bog with zero worth, it diminishes the value of village Sleepy Hollow. Number five, property values and tax base. A loss of the lake would diminish the property values of the homes around the lake as well as the tax base for these same homes. This raises a legal issue for those of us on the lake and who wish to resolve the satisfaction of all involved, which brings up the final point or question to the board, is that, is there a village easement around Lake Sharon? We thought there was a fifteen-foot easement from the waterfront on each property adjoining the lake, but with a severe erosion, what defines the waterfront? And is this easement still viable? Because when the easement was applied, the shoreline was another twenty, thirty feet in. Are the platte surveys, no, incorrect? You know, if the lake drains, where is the platte stop? You know, how does this affect my property value? We're here because we don't want Lake Sharon to die, and it is dying very quickly. And so what can we do about these issues as community? And so that's why we're here looking for some direction.
Okay, I appreciate your concern and your questions. Lake Sharon has been an issue for a number of years. The dams have been an issue for a number of years. The two big problems that we encounter is the regulations that we must go through to modify or do anything to the waterways of the United States. That is, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has to be involved, and they have very strict regulations as to what we can and cannot do. The next item is the cost. We cannot afford the cost. We just simply cannot. Now, there are some other mitigating issues that go along with this, but nothing that we can control. One is, Lake Sharon is fed by Pinecone Lake, which is above it. Pinecone Lake is a well-fed lake. The water table in Dundee Township is going down, and that lake is not filling as fast or as deep as it used to. Therefore, Lake Sharon's not receiving the water it used to receive. So we got an issue there, too, and there's not much that we can do about the water table at this point.
And the easement?
And the easement, it's very possible there was a fifteen-foot easement in the original drawings, but as you said, the erosion around that lake, I'm not quite sure. I took a quick look at a county tax map earlier, and you can see a small sliver, but the lake has definitely cut up in toward that line to where there's a point of it where the water is really where the line is.
And Steve?
Yes, Joe?
Because as far as I know, the work that Greg Rosaka did in the nineties, I don't think there's any public easement around that lake. It's just village-owned property that the lake happens to be in. But in some areas, the residents, like other areas, it's.
It was not designated as an easement, it was designated as village property.
Pretty much Sabatino Park or other village.
And the fact that the creek has expanded up beyond its banks, it's still within village property.
For the most part, yes.
And that becomes a legal question that we're not prepared to ask at this point.
Well, it's going to happen.
But it's going to have to happen sooner or later, right?
Do you have any contacts of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers? I have a way around that, I have a solution for them.
Well, I'm more than willing to have the staff contact you tomorrow with that information.
Have them do that or contact, just deliver it to him. She's writing all this crap down.
He does that for me.
Because it goes, it's a dangerous situation. One step, and then it erodes, and you're done. You're not going to get out. I mean.
Well, we're in Pete Bog. The houses on that north side, when the contractor, the developer, Mr. Ramsay, built them, I happened to ask him how far he was driving those piles to hit bedrock, and in that neighborhood, it was twenty-eight to thirty-two feet. So that's a deep mud. This was the old Oxbow of the Fox.
Yeah, we understand that. That's not the question. The question is, what do we do to keep people out of that lake or?
Well, it goes back, yeah, even, there was a young woman years ago that was very intent on the shoreline restoration, putting the vegetation up to keep the ducks from walking in. That's one of the big problems, the geese tend to, you know, if there's no vegetation, they'll walk in and out, climb up and down, they'll tear it up. We've also thought that by just leaving a couple of spots for the people to fish, we would restrict their activity along the shoreline. I'm getting an idea that that's not always helping.
It is, and like on my part, I haven't removed any vegetation, so my shoreline is pristine, okay? Same with Pat's, you know, he hasn't done anything to it, and so that shoreline is pristine, even mostly around that little area there where the flag is. Our concern is that the people who remove, like my next-door neighbor, removes all the vegetation and all of a sudden that stuff starts going, like, in a year, all right, it fills up. And so, you know, is there anything we can do to get them to start putting natural vegetation? Can we transplant for somewhere else, Sleepy Hollow?
Education. If it's private property, it's an educational situation. If we had, if we had public property, as I said, we did have, oh geez, what was her name? Sharon, was it Sharon? Joe, come I think.
I'm just trying to think, too. I know you can see, look, I can't remember, and I'm friends with her on Facebook, I'll have to look, but.
Not very good friends, are you?
This same talk on various lakes, and Greg Rosaka put a couple of years of effort into this, that they tried to get a dam repair permit, and I believe some of the midnight restoration work is what put an end to that because there was a date and time put on that, so we couldn't do that. But, I mean, it's been an issue in all the lakes, you know, Rainbow Creek, I know I was a trustee in the seventies that somebody worked on Rainbow Creek, and then this one. But it's, right, it's, but the reason I was bringing this up, Tony, if you can look, I bet you from the nineties, late nineties, Greg put a bunch of work and talked to people and otherwise on Lake Sharon and some of the other dams, so you might be able to dig some of that out and just see what has been done so far, because.
Okay, okay.
But I believe that, and Stephen.
Oh shit, it's the name that rings a bell with me.
Yeah, but I don't think she's really involved in anything anymore, I'm not.
No, I don't either, I haven't seen her for a couple of years. But yeah, she did the butterfly garden up at the school.
Yeah.
Did all the work around Lake Sharon and part of Sleepy Creek.
And I sent that to you and to Tony, but I believe still most of the shoreline around Lake Sharon is still owned by the village of Sleepy Hollow, that, I don't think anybody has a crush on private property, if that answers your question.
Yeah, my property line is about six feet away from the lake, so, but about twenty years ago, I was with, I was the club master for PAC 88, and I don't know if Sue Harney is related to you or not, but she was involved with us, the Cub Scouts, and we did a project, which was very successful, built, or digging, had the kids build digging, give root plants around the, and the lake, because there was nothing, there was nothing there, it was just, mud just kept going in, and it has worked. It has worked. It reduces the amount of ability to fish, but people still fish, there's no problem, you know, during the July fourth thing, the fishing contest, they still get enough people out there to do it, that's right, but that has helped a tremendous amount, but.
But we had to get everybody around the lake to do the same thing.
Right.
Is it impossible for all the individual homeowners whose property is adjacent to the lake to go out with research and find out what dehydrated plants they can put there, and if it is the village permission to do so?
On their property, and if there is some village property behind them, I'm sure the village board would be more than willing to accept some help.
I was involved with that, two vegetation is big, critical. It's critical. Plus, we found out also, because when you, once you get that surround, the geese don't like to go in there, right, they think they're trapped. So there's very little geese in there, some ducks, but not very many ducks, but, you know, the waterfowl pretty much keeps them away. I mean, I live right there, I watch it every day, so, so it's, it's interesting, so.
We've had a reduction in the geese population in the neighborhood in the last couple of years.
The hawk came and took out a goose.
No?
Great.
Did you, did you, you flew away with it, huh? Picked it right up and took off, huh?
It's a big hawk.
Yeah.
You know, we share your frustration with the silt again. Steve mentioned, it's been a problem a long time. I remember down on Tilcrest, the ponds right there, based, that was great fishing in there for a long time.
Yeah.
That silted in, Frotnax going through the same thing, silting in, they went into dredging. We were involved with that. It's so silted in, it's like if you took your finger in pudding.
Yeah.
And it just fills it again, yeah, so, there's no easy solution, but.
At what point does, at what point around the lake, where does the village property start? I know, he didn't tell me that.
And I know where my house is.
Well, all the little lines are on there.
But my concern is that if it is community, if there is some community, you know, village property still not yet on the platte survey of a homeowner, there's any way we can get Cub Scouts who are, I'll go out there and plant vegetation out there, then they can't complain.
Yeah, it's, any project that you can come up with, if you can get the support and the help, then, I don't think you'll find much opposition from the board. What we've got a problem with is finding money to do anything with.
So that back to my question, right? Pinecone is a private lake, the folks who live on it are responsible for the lock, the dam, the keys, everything. Sharon and Sharon, the smaller one, are village property. How, what if we did some sort of fundraiser within the community to raise money for?
Be my guest.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I think there's enough, from the people that have been fishing, that we've been unofficially calling, people who just walk by with their kids and stand there and go, this is such a great little feature in our community, everybody wants to see it survive still, so, I think if, even if it was only, you know.
We'd appreciate your contribution to help with us, so.
Still want to talk to the Army Corps of Engineers.
We'll get you the info for that.
Because they can put a lock in there, and they still have, their whole issue is pulling water. They don't care how it flows, you know, they don't care if there's a little bubble running there, make it flow, right? As long as it's flowing, right? So you could do that by using a mini lock. And as their engineers, they love that idea.
I will, I will get you that info, should I give it to Annie?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, when it comes to vegetation, call my wife, I think she can do it.
He just volunteered.
Well, yeah, my concern is, is dealing with, like, my next-door neighbor, who is unique, and it's like, we're going to mow everything down so we can, you know, like, that's not the idea of being on a lake, you know, so you can see it, you know, and all that silt. I mean, chunks are falling off now into the, into the lake, and it's a real problem. As a reliability of some, if some kid falls in there on the Fourth of July, you know, we'd be taken for days.
Unfortunately, we'd have enough people to help. It's somebody going in that's unseen.
Yeah, well, that's my concern, that the lower dam is, or any way we can pull people off there, fence it, or do something so the kids aren't getting in there, that's what they're doing, they're running back in there, doing whatever the kids do.
Well, the dam is falling apart, and the factory, because of all of that, and we're having a hard time keeping the water in, and piles and great, we've got the sandbag, and the best, really, a dam, and that dam is not only a place for kids to be screwing around on, but what they fall into is in pretty bad.
If you have an Army Corps use it, they're the ones that have it spread the throat.
Right. We'll get you that information tomorrow, sometime, go from there, and if you've got any other questions, give us a holler. Okay? All right.
Maybe I could get you.
Okay. Okay, next item is comments from the public. We've got a number of those this evening. I will read. This is in the order in which we have received them. My miss, Condra Kowalski. The topic is sheds, she would like her comment read for her this evening. So here we go. Quote, "We have lived here in Sleepy Hollow for six years. We are on seven point seven-five acres with a two-car garage, and it's very hard keeping the ride on the moor, snow blowers, gardening tools, et cetera, plus two cars in the garage. We have to leave our cars outside." We have to leave our cars outside. Being able to have a nice, well-kept shed would alleviate a lot of storage issues." Next one is, uh, this Tori Camp. Topic is shed approval. I take she would like me to read this comment for her this evening. Quote, "Sheds just large enough to hold tractor, push more shovels, gardening items, pots for winter, et cetera. Must match existing structure, period, permit, comma, and location approval. Plus height restrictions will improve look of Sleepy Hollow, less vehicles and driveways." Unquote. Mr. Adam Kaufman. Topic, need of shed. Like his que- his comment read for him during the meeting. Quote, "With no basement because of high water table, we're very limited on space. For growing families with large lots, it's almost impossible to be able to fit cars in garages. You've got riding lawnmowers and other lawn equipment, snow blowers, bikes, tools and other large kids' toys to store. For both current and prospective residents, this can be a huge hurdle to overcome. With certain guidelines in place, I feel this can be done tastefully and would serve as a huge resource. Not only for families considering moving because of limited space, but also a small income source via permits fees for a village already short of cash. The alternative is people leaving large equipment outside, which can be an eyesore and an acceleration of depreciation of vehicles left out in the elements. With many, with our many large trees around the driveway, we've narrowly missed big damage to cars from falling tree limbs in storms. Please consider allowing residents to add sheds to our properties." Next one, Maureen Watton. Topic, sheds in Sleepy Hollow. I guess she wants me to read this in the minutes for her. Quote, "We are new moving eye to Sleepy Hollow in two weeks and would be thrilled to have sheds allowed to store a riding mower, et cetera. I vote to have this approved." And the next one is Ms. Michelle Hicks. Topic is sheds. She'd like her comments read during the meeting. I quote, "We are on board with allowing, she's on property. We have lived here for 25 years and we have a three car garage and would love to have a nice, well-kept shed right behind our garage, not visible from the road even, to keep our riding mower. If that was allowed, we would not have to continually park one and sometimes two cars in the driveway. Subceptible to thefts, vandalisms that have been occurring in our community." End of quote. The next item is from Christine Fuqua. Topic, sheds. Uh, I take she would like me to read her comments into the minutes. Uh, quote, "When my house was built in 1988, a Honda Accord was 174.8 inches long. Today, at 2021, the Honda Accord is 196.1 inches long. That is a loss of 21.3 inches in depth to my garage. Now, add five bicycles, moors, camping equipment, yard maintenance items, tools, trash cans, et cetera. It's an unrealistic expectation, families to safely park their vehicles in their garage. Keep their yard in order and manage all the equipment it takes to have fun outdoors. We, as a family, have to choose to park our, to park in our driveway to have room for other items. However, this would change if we had the ability to have a shed to store all our lawn and camping equipment in a shed. Please consider sheds so we can park our vehicles in the garage." End of quote. Next one is, uh, Mr. Steven S. Topic is sheds. I take he would like me to read his comments into the minutes. Quote, "Greetings. I would like the board to consider allowing residents to have well-maintained sheds matching the color of their homes. This would allow homeowners to store lawnmowers and other equipment to go in their sheds instead of taking space in garages, forcing vehicles to be parked on driveways. Also a great place to store children's tools instead of keeping them on the driveway. Thank you for your consideration, Steve." Okay, another one. Would you like to read it or would you like me to read it, Mr. Hoff?
Is that mine?
That's yours. I can, you'd like to be my guest. I'll take a drink of water.
All right, again, my name is Phil Hoff. I've been a resident of Sleepy Hollow for 29 years now. You could say I was invested here and I'm not going anywhere. I was originally attracted to Sleepy Hollow for its gently rolling hills and the fact that the village did not allow fences and sheds. As a steward of our landscape and founding member of the Sleepy Hollow Beautification Committee, I have done the following to give back to Sleepy Hollow. I organize groups to pick up trash every year on Earth Day along our roadways. I've mowed the side of Sleepy Hollow road with my own mower and cleaned up the entrance signs to Sleepy Hollow along with my wife and neighbor. I take pride in maintaining the landscape integrity of our village. This is a unique and beautiful community which we are all responsible for preserving. The village of Sleepy Hollow has been around for 63 years and has survived quite well without the use of sheds. We can easily live another 50 years without them. This is a decision every property owner should be able to vote on before rendering a vote by the board. People say we need change with the times and move forward by rewriting our village ordinances. I am open to rewriting ordinances that make sense and improve the overall beauty and charm of Sleepy Hollow while also keeping our property values strong. As a village, we have difficulty enforcing the existence, existing ordinances on the books with our limited part-time staff. Add in a couple hundred sheds and who is going to pay for all the work involved in approving, inspecting and monitoring the life cycles of these sheds? Who wants to be the person telling residents their shed needs repair in 10 years without the ability to set foot on their property? I can understand that people need more sp- space to store their stuff. This will solve a few people's storage problems, but will hurt every resident in lowering our property values and make Sleepy Hollow less of a sought-after place to purchase a home. Residents with storage issues have many other alternatives besides building a shed on their backyard. We are in a village with limited means and staff. We need to figure out how to maintain our roadways, clean out our culverts, fix Lake Sharon and mow all the common areas in the summer months. We also need to figure out how to garner more revenue for the village to keep trained employees from leaving us all the time for more competitive pay. It is these topics we should be prioritizing and finding solutions for in the near future. I trust our village board members will come up with a correct stance on the topic of sheds moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, continuing with, uh, submitted, uh, comments. Uh, Barry Sanders. Topic, sheds in the village. Would like him read into the minutes. Quote, "We moved to this village 25 years ago because of its beautiful parks and homes. No fences, no outdoor sheds, all open yards. Why would the village be considering allowing this now? The people that want this knew what they were getting when they purchased a home here. If you put it to a vote, I'm sure it would be defeated resoundingly. No sheds." End quote. Next one. Kevin Erickson. Topic is sheds. And he'd like his comments read into the minutes. I quote, "I vehemently oppose the, to allowing sheds. I am vehemently opposed to allowing sheds in the village. I recently purchased a home here and the reasons my family and I chose Sleepy Hollow include the specific guidelines in place barring fences and sheds. I believe the restrictions on sheds and similarly, and similarly positively contribute significantly to the aesthetics of our community. I am sensitive to the concerns of homeowners in favor of allowing sheds as I have a smaller garage than some as well, but it is up to me as responsible homeowner and a member of the community to store my belongings and equipment safely, securely and consistent with an existing village code. In addition, I also have significant concerns about enforcement. Code issues including debris outside homes and heights of grass and weeds are already a growing concern of mine and other residents as well. And I am certain sheds would soon fall into this category. With all due respect to the village and its hardworking employees, resources are an ongoing issue. And I fear that this will be another area that could be abused by unprincipled residents and poses the risk of ultimately contributing to declining curb appeal and potentially property values as well in the future should sheds be allowed. In summary, I believe there is no need for resolutions that allow sheds to proceed in front of the Board of Trustees. I feel strongly that our village has a unique sense of community in part because of the rules and the rules such as these in question around sheds. And they should be, and they should not be amended. Thank you for your time and consideration. End of quote. Got another one. Hang on here, we're getting through them. Uh, Bill Rice. Topic, backyard sheds. He'd like his comments read into the meeting. I quote, "I am against allowing backyard sheds within Sleepy Hollow. I believe that it would detract from the aesthetics of our community." End quote. And we're down to the last one. Uh, Mr. William Zozukas. Uh, topic, proposed resolution to allow sheds. He would like his comments read for him during the meeting. I quote, "It is our understanding that there is a proposal pending that would allow sheds in Sleepy Hollow residential neighborhoods. As a longtime 25-plus year residence of the village, we are vehemently opposed to a change in our current ordinances that would allow sheds within residential areas for the following reasons. We moved to, one, we moved to this community for the feeling of unobstructed views and the general feeling of open space that came with our no fences and no sheds ordinances. Sheds would likely impair those views. Point two, build quality of sheds would not be up to the standards of the homes. Even if the building codes and standards restrict, who would enforce the codes during the building phase as well as going forward?" Question. Uh, we already have codes that are not being enforced due to lack of manpower in gen- or general malaise. Third point, also, we all know, we all know that the outsides of sheds would end up being just another place where clutter and junk end up, creating even more of an eyesight, eyesore. Fourth and last point, in the end, we do not see this as an enhancement to the community as we'll lose our uniqueness, charm and make us just another cookie cutter village. End of quote. That is it for public comments.
President?
Yes, Joe?
Steve, would you be so kind as to give a quick elevator pitch in like 30 seconds? Cause I heard a lot of votes and resolutions otherwise, just to explain to the people watching on YouTube what the process is and the cost to, uh, page your ordinances?
Well, I will let the, the public know that there is no motion on the floor to allow sheds or to discuss sheds. Uh, it has been brought before this board before, it has been defeated. Uh, if the public would like to petition a referendum, they are more than welcome to do so. They had an opportunity at the election on May, or April 6th. The next one will be sometime the spring of, or the fall of 2022. I believe will be the next election and a referendum could be floated if they so alight. But, uh, is that about it, Joe?
And just to clarify, the vote, the board cannot vote to modify that part of the zoning ordinance. That would require zoning and public.
Right, they, the board could vote to accept the change in the ordinance. But you're right, they would have to first go through the planning and zoning, a public hearing along with the transcript and the finding of facts and a recommendation from the P and Z to the board before that would be taking place.
Which is several thousand dollars, I believe, last time we tried to do that, is it not, Steve?
Correct. You're, you're looking at somewhere in the $5,000 to $10,000 range.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify just so that this thing wouldn't go.
Okay, no problem. All right, that is it for comments from the public. Uh, trustees report roads and parks, Mr. Harney.
Um, nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, finance, there's no report on that this evening. Water and sewer, Mr. Nemec?
Yeah, I, I have a, a quick thing. I think everybody, uh, saw it, but I'm just gonna read it just so it makes its way. If, Tony, if you can make sure this works into the minutes and so anybody listening. Our finance, uh, Brian Lee, he worked out some numbers. Um, Jeff Steele created a, a water replacement cost estimate, which you can see in the document above it, of the mains that are in dire need to replacement. So the, Kyle and Jeff Steele and Brian went together. The water mains in that list are what they consider urgent. That is not by means the wish list or the ones that can be replaced, those are the ones that are urgently to replace. The cost, the low end is 24, around 2,400 or 24, $2,453,250 in the low end. And the high end is 3,271. Um, that is the number that Brian went with just to be safe. Research into various loans, there are some I E P A, uh, loans. And Jeff Steele said there are always grants available. He has never applied for many because you have to have basically a shovel-ready project to go. Uh, but Brian worked out at a 20-year loan at three four, 3.4 interest. Um, using the high estimate, it's gonna work out to, uh, uh, loan payment and interest of about $18,802.83 per month, which works out to about $18.13 to pay off that loan over 20 years. In fiscal year '21, the, we spent $68,000 to repair those mains. Um, talking to Kyle, um, all that cost this past year was on mains that are in urgent need to repair. I've mentioned it before, they've literally had water main breaks where they had to cut out a previous, uh, patch. I may also add that, uh, when I was a water trustee in the late nineties, we had, Steve was, uh, roads and parks. We had some issues with rust. Um, the line, we had a different engineer at the time, the lines were pigged, cleaned out. And at that time, the recommendation of that engineer was to replace those mains as, mains as soon as possible. They literally, if you see a break, they are just falling apart. The estimate this year is 75,000, hopefully we keep it at that there. So, uh, Brian's number replacing those main, if we replace those mains that are urgent need where most of the breaks are, we could probably realize the savings of $6 each month for residents on that. Um, just FYI, the current water, water loan of $6.70 we paid off in November 1st, 2024. Some of you may know that the water, much of this water main was used when it was installed 50-plus years ago. So it was used valves, used fire hydrants, used water mains. Jeff Steele said we have some unique issues down there is that the soils, which we were just talking about. Um, if you've ever been down there and you hear a truck go by, it vibrates. He goes, it literally causes the bolts in some of these pipes and the valves to loosen up. So the way, may have many small leaks in there. So, um, we've been advised for many years now that parts of this system that we need to replace may be at risk of catastrophic failure. So, which would be a water pressure issue till we got that fixed for the entire village, so. My question is, now that Brian's put in the work, Jeff Steele's put in the work, Kyle put in the work, I put quite a bit of work in this over the last six months or so. How does the board want to proceed? Knowing that Jeff Steele said we're probably looking at a timeframe from when we finally give the okay, which we're not gonna do tonight, but when we finally give the okay of doing, started the engineering on this, that we're looking at least 18 months before we could probably start the project. So, questions and comments and how does the board wish to proceed?
Well, first off, Joe, uh, are all of these water mains strictly east side?
Yes. And, and I may also add that.
My next question is, did you consider a special service assessment on just this?
Uh, well, no, and I will say that we've made other water main repairs and done it in other areas and basically the water.
That's, that's a repair. You're talking about a total replacement here.
Right, well, and it's not. If we. if we were to have a failure in this system, it would be issues on the inside of the village. I mean, we've done replacements on Bow Brummel.
Turn the water off at Sleepy Hollow Road.
I think we've always treated the water system as the water system, so. And I may also point out that even though it's on the books, uh, we depreciate the water system. We've actually never, ever funded that depreciation. So at some point, the bill's gonna come due on Saddle Club and all the other areas in the village. And, you know, the water mains have a limited lifespan. So, how does the board wish to proceed? Are we, are we gonna, you know, should we tell Jeff Steele to give us an estimate on the engineering and, and start rolling forward on this?
I have a question, Joe.
Um, Brian did the calculations shortly after he started, and the current cost of running the system, um, our end fee should be about thirty-five dollars to cover our costs, cover depreciations, and be competitive with the villages around us. So right now, we're at twenty-five plus a six seventy. When this loan is paid off, we won't be that far off of that, so.
Joe, Anthony had a question for you.
Go ahead, Anthony.
So like we have Windmore and Locust and Hillcrest, and, and the totals for each of these particular areas. Uh, the reason I'm retired is I was never really good at math, but, uh, when, when I look at these, is one more pressing than the other? I mean, obviously, this is a couple hundred million dollars.
No, he didn't prioritize that. He just said this is, you know, the area.
So if we were to have Jeff or engineering, or if at some point the board, uh, had a consensus to begin one of these, is there one in particular that is worse than the others?
Uh, no. There are the ones in the village that need to be replaced, but they were not included in the list. These were the ones that he considered urgent and potential for catastrophic failure.
I understand, and then I guess the other question I'm gonna ask, and I'm, I'm asking the question because I, I, I don't know the answer. I'm not asking the question to.
Oh, go ahead.
Anything on anyone? If, if, uh, President Pickett brought up the fact, he asked the question of these in the eastern part of the village. Uh, I live in the western part of the village. If, if I was a, a resident, uh, why would I pay for water mains being repaired on the eastern side of the village if I don't live in the eastern side of the village? Again, for all those people who are watching it on TV, I'm just asking the question because I'm sure we all are thinking of it in our head.
Um, all I would say is it was not brought up, and I, I, I suppose that's a possibility, but in the past, uh, fifty-some years, the water system has gone to pay for the water system. Um, I think the only time we've considered a special assessment is we wanted to run new line to somebody's house. Um, but, everybody, everybody comes down to the fact is that we're not paying for depreciation in our system. Um, we did Bow Brummel, which, you know, we did Crane, which, um, we looped cords. We've done work over the last twenty, twenty-five years to replace the water mains that have needed repair. Uh, and we've never done that. I'll, I'll just leave it at that, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Joe, I think you've given us a lot to think about, and we're gonna have to digest this for a meeting or two.
Yeah, that was it. I just wanna put it out there and just kinda get, you know, and Jeff Steele will be at the next meeting. We can start asking more questions, but that's just, you know, uh, I mean, the potential is there. Uh, this needs to be done, so, I mean.
Yep.
There, there is some cost savings by doing a lot upfront. Uh, there's money available now through some, you know, various infrastructure fees. Um, as I said, Jeff Steele said there are many grants that he's passed up for this kind of work because we've had nothing ready to go. So, that's the decision we have to make. So, we can nickel and dime it and take a few off and cut down the cost, but eventually they're gonna have to be done.
Yeah, Joe, this is Steve DiAtley. Um, how many water main breaks did we have last year? Do you have any idea?
I don't have the number. I normally have the dollar amount. Um, Steve, you know, I say seven to ten, is that sound about right? There are normally about seven to ten grand a piece to fix. Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Uh, I do know we do have multiple deferred projects. Uh, we have broken valves that we know about. We have other valves that we don't know the issue. I don't know if you remember, we had, what, a year and a half ago, Steve? We had the, the fire suppression line to Sleepy Hollow School fail, um, broke on their property. Kyle turned off water, which he thought would just shut off the water for Sleepy Hollow School and a few homes around there, and residents all the way down to Locust lost water pressure. So, we have multiple issues that, you know, and that's the problem too, is that as we go to fix the valves that need to be fixed now, to fix these issues, it's just costing us money. And I will point that out, that seventy-five thousand dollars that we spend on water main repairs is just, pun intended, water down the drain. I mean, there, you know, and I believe that's the number that Brian figured out that over thirty years, um, we're gonna spend almost two point five million dollars on water main repairs and have nothing to show for it. I mean, that's another consideration.
Happy employees.
I don't, I'm not sure he enjoys doing that. Have a miserable job if you're ever been out there.
I know.
Any other questions? Cause there's a lot to digest here, but it's.
No, I, I appreciate the report. I think it's very helpful in looking at and seeing the numbers, and I think it's something we definitely have to do something sooner rather than later.
There's gonna be no easy answer.
There's no easy answer.
Anything else, Joe?
Read it into the minutes so people in the future can, can read it, and we have easy access to these numbers, and Brian put so much work into this.
Okay, anything else, Joe?
Well, let us all.
All right. Thank you. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. DiAtley?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, as Mayor Pickett said earlier, the swearing-in of our new police chief is coming up on Monday. I hope you all do take the time to meet this gentleman. He is a fantastic person, um, vast amount of knowledge and experience, and I think he will be very good for Sleepy Hollow. And I just really hope that everybody takes a chance to stop by, introduce yourself, or if you see him out patrolling, uh, introduce yourselves and get to know him. He's a great guy. Um, I don't have anything further. Sergeant Wilson, do you have anything?
No, other than the fact that we're ready to go live with the start on radios on May twenty-six, nine AM.
Fantastic. Great. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DiAtley. Uh, public buildings and environment, Mr. Thornd.
Uh, no report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, building and zoning, Mr. Pareno.
Uh, Barbara Detmer put something in the, uh, newsletter. Uh, we have gotten copies of it to look at. Uh, just wanted to make a comment. The heading of it is from the desk of the Department of Building Safety and Zoning, and it's really, uh, pretty inclusive of, uh, things that everyone should be looking at now that it's springtime and summer's approaching and, uh, people do more work uh, in, in and around their homes. Uh, I had, uh, two residents on my street recently, uh, you know, were, were, were stopped in the middle of their projects um, because of not getting permits. I guess the, the question, or the, the comment I wanted to make was that, and she makes reference in here, you know, there are some things, you know, new floor or wallpaper or fixing the drywall hole where you do not need a permit. So all I'm asking is that, you know, the residents, uh, if there's a question, just ask. It's a simple phone call. Uh, I know people have reached out to me, and I also wanted to be in the minutes that the only person who's gonna give approval for a permit is, uh, our building, uh, department. That's headed by Barbara Detmer. Uh, her phone number is on, uh, the webpage. Her phone number is in the newsletter. Uh, if anybody reaches out to me, I can give you her phone number. But, uh, recently, uh, someone had questioned something, and, and I interpreted it one way. Uh, it had to do with, uh, uh, temporary garden structure, and I was incorrect. So I'm just calling on the record to say that, uh, Trustee Pareno has no authority to say what is permitted and what is not permitted. I'm there to help. I can guide you. I can, you know, give you the right information, but, uh, please read that section of the newsletter, uh, when it comes out. Um, the other comment, uh, Mr. President, just briefly, um, you know, we did listen to a bunch of comments from the public. Uh, I was approached by two residents a couple of weeks ago. I met with them in this room, and I, uh, specifically listed, uh, the, the, the requirements that President Pickett reviewed, uh, when Trustee Nemec asked the question. Uh, as you may all know, uh, Mr. Thornd, I'll let you off the hook because you weren't on the board last year, but as, as many of you may know, uh, from a, from a, uh, subject area regarding sheds, uh, I had presented on two different occasions, and rightfully so, the board's vote was, uh, in the negative. And I explained to the, the two residents that, uh, here again, uh, Trustee Pareno is not the one who's gonna be pushing, uh, sheds or fences or trapezes or, or, uh, pup tents or Indian tents in the village of Sleepy Hollow. If residents have a question or if residents have an issue, uh, we have a resident in the building this evening who made some comments. I continue to encourage all residents to come live, watch on Zoom, submit comments, but, uh, you know, the board has to, uh, the board looks at all issues. So, uh, it's encouraging that residents have made some comments, but there is a process. And that's, uh, the end of my comments for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, uh, that's it for trustees reports. Old business, any old business to come before the board? There's no old business. Got any new business to come before the board? There being no new business?
I move we adjourn. Second.
Moved by DiAtley, seconded by Pareno that we adjourn. Roll call, please. Mr. Thornd?
Aye.
Mr. Hardy? All right. Mr. Nemec?
Aye.
Mr. Dantley?
Aye.
Mr. Brando?
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. We are adjourned. June seventh or eighth, June seventh is the next meeting.
Yes.
All the way to June.
All the way to June.
Just a discussion. The latest revision to Robert's Rules of Order, the article minutes. Comments should never be placed in the minutes. It even says highly discouraged. So.
We've incorporated the comments from the, uh, public simply as a means of ease to get the, uh, to get them into the, into the record. Uh, you're right, it's not a transcript, it's not a hearing, but it does give the individual, uh, an opportunity to have.
We're not locked anymore, are we? We're still on YouTube?